Miller, thank you kindly for joining us on a Tuesday in downtown Charlottesville. Lot of news to get to on the I Love Seaville Show, the water cooler of content and conversation for Charlottesville and central Virginia. We're going to talk the school board forum tonight. Did you know there's four candidates running for three spots? Did you know one of those four candidates is the most notorious activist in Charlottesville, Virginia history? Did you know one of the other candidates running is a failed city council, uh, I don't want to call him member. What, how do I put this in perspective? Someone who failed at earning a spot on city council?
Yeah.
There are two other candidates that are running that are incumbents. This is a pretty significant story, and it's completely flying under the radar. Completely flying under the radar. I'm going to ask you, the viewer and listener to this question. When you run for school board, how is it, how important is it to you voters that candidates are parents, number one, and number two, have children attending schools within the school system they are trying to represent? Does that matter to you? Does that matter to you, Judah? You're, you're actually a perfect guy to talk about this, um, because you're a single guy with no kids. So if you're, if you're a voter and you have a significant school board race, nearly what, nearly, find out the school board budget. I should know this. Yearly budget. Alamo County is right under 300 million for the year. If you're a voter and you're voting in November and you have four candidates to pick, how important is it to you that the candidates are parents, number one, and number two, have children in the school system that they are looking to represent? I want to have that conversation on today's show. How important is it to you that the school board candidates are looking to be in this position longer than one term? It's a four-year term. Or do you see this as an opportunity to work essentially a minor league system and a stepping stone for a political, a political ladder climb? We'll talk about that on today's show. Judah, is, uh, is the feed choppy?
Yeah, I think so. It should be, it should be clearing up now.
It's clearing up now?
Yeah.
All right. For the viewers and listeners that are asking, the feed should be clearing up now. We're good? You got everything closed on the, you sure about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Convert that image.
So anytime you do stuff on that computer, it chops up the feed. So once the show goes live, let's not do that anymore. Uh, which we talked about. Um, a lot I want to talk about on the program, including a look at UVA's North Fork Research Park. We have photography and, and rendering, uh, from the University of Virginia. They're, they're building a town north of, in northern Alamo County, guys. They are building a town. We'll talk about that and show the rendering on today's show. We'll also talk Louisa County versus Green County, which has the most upside. Louisa County or Green County, which has the most upside, that topic on today's show. And ladies and gentlemen, we are going to have, um, uh, an update on Lee Vogler, the Danville City Councilor, who was horribly burned in a horrific, uh, turn of events in southwestern Virginia. Uh, an update on his health on today's show. Curtis Shaver and Rob Neo, welcome to the broadcast. Thank you kindly for joining us. City councilors, Alamo County supervisors, Nelson County supervisors, and Louisa County supervisors watching the show. Uh, the supervisors from Louisa County that are watching the program. We're going to be talking about your jurisdiction and we're going to compare and contrast the upside with Louisa County to Green County and ask the question, which jurisdiction has more upside? So Green County, if you're from Green County, if you have ties to Green County, if you're an elected official in Green County, you need to watch today's program. Help us spread the love. Help us spread the gospel. We'll give some love to Charlottesville Sanitary Supply, 61 consecutive years in business. Charlottesville Sanitary Supply located on High Street, online at charlottesvillesanitariesupply.com. The Vermillion family have been in business for 61 years. It's been family owned and operated for three generations. The Vermillion family is five generations strong in Alamo County. This business is as institutional and as awesome a business as you will find in our region. Free in-market delivery. They will, will oftentimes beat any price you find online and get what you buy on charlottesvillesanitariesupply.com and at your doorstep the same day and at no charge to you. There's no reason not to do any sanitary purchase at any other place except for Charlottesville Sanitary Supply, folks. It just, there's no reason not to do it. Charlottesville Sanitary Supply. Judah Wickhauer, studio camera, then two-shot, TV, radio, and print, watching the program, um, as we speak. Headline most intriguing to you, uh, Judah Wickhauer, with quite a few people watching the program.
I'm, uh, I'm glad that, uh, that the city schools are receiving a grant and, uh, it sounds like it's, uh, for a good reason. Um, I just hope they use it wisely.
What's the reason?
Uh, the reason is what they call a, uh, a community school model. Um, and, uh, just to put it simply, it largely involves, involving, um, getting the parents and the students more involved in things. Um, and I definitely think it's a good idea to get parents involved and, uh, getting students to, uh, to really, um, really get involved in the, in the schoolwork rather than just, uh, coming into class and leaving.
I'll tell you what, where parents need to get involved is this school board race. Make sure we're even on the two-shot. It looks like it's not balanced on the framing. Um, the, the level of involvement, uh, should start now. We have four candidates running for three spots. We're going to introduce you to the candidates for school board on today's program. This is one of the most significant stories of the year, and it's completely flying under the radar. Uh, do we have the Charlottesville Democrats flyer? That's the promotional piece for tonight's forum that we can put on screen?
Yeah.
Excellent work. Let's put that on screen. Every single one of these candidates is a Democrat. In fact, this promotional flyer, look at the screen, look at the screen, look at the screen. If you look at the bottom, it's got some branding on it from the Charlottesville Democrats. If anyone tells you that school board races are, are, are nonpartisan or, or, or not tied to political ideology or political party, just be like, come on, dude. That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. Here are the Democrats of Charlottesville are literally the, join the Charlottesville Democrats for a forum with the school board candidates. And they have the Charlottesville Democrats logo on them. Zayanna Bryant on the left, Deshaun Cooper, second from last, left, Emily Dooley, and Lisa Torres. Did you find the, uh, the budget, Jade Dubs?
Uh, not yet.
I'll see if I can find that. City Schools Budget 2025. We should know this. I should know this. I'm disappointed in myself that I don't know this. Um, fiscal year 2025, 118 million. Call it 120 million. So for the sake of remembering, we're going to do a back of the napkin estimate. We can keep this somewhere on, on the computers, a log. Call it 120 million for Charlottesville City Schools and just under 300 million for Alamo County. School Board budgets. Talking significant amounts of money here. I want to introduce you to the candidates today. There's a forum tonight at the Jefferson School. It starts at 6:00 PM. Four people running for three spots. Zayanna Bryant, Deshaun Cooper, Emily Dooley, Lisa Torres. The Q and A will cover audience questions which have been submitted for consideration. There will be, uh, an opportunity for you to watch it online. The school board race is one of the local elections on November's ballot. Other races that Charlottesville residents will see on their ballots include two seats on the Charlottesville City Council. That's already been decided because the Democratic primary determined it was Juan Diego Wade and Jen Fleischer, the Commonwealth's Attorney, the Sheriff, the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer. It's October 14th. We are three weeks away, one, two, three weeks away from Election Day today. We are three weeks away and not a single person is talking about this school board race where there's $120 million of money on the line to be mentioned, budgeted, and one of four candidates and arguably the frontrunner candidate, notorious activist, Zayanna Bryant, looks like she's a slam dunk to win. Judah Wickhauer, I'm going to ask you the question straight up and straightforwardly. Why is no one talking about this school board race?
Uh, I mean, like I said, if I have to guess, uh, it would be that, uh, a lot of people see it as foregone. Uh, there's only four people going for three spots, so I think that, uh, if I, I would say that it's probably going to be, uh, Ziona and Deshaun for the, the final spot.
Wow. You think the incumbents are slam dunks? You think the incumbents are favorites over Zayanna Bryant? Make sure those lower thirds are on screen.
I think that, uh, I think that because they've got, because they're incumbents and because there's a seat open, that, uh, it's fairly safe to say that unless Deshaun has some major backing, uh, he's, his main, uh, the main, uh, fight is going to be between he and, uh, and Ziona.
Viewers and listeners, let us know your thoughts. Is Deshaun Cooper, um, at this point, the fourth horse in a race that only has three spots to claim? Are you in agreement right now that Zayanna Bryant is a clear-cut favorite? Or do you believe that the value of being incumbents, Emily Dooley, Lisa Larson Torres, that'll carry them to victory lane? Torres is, is a veteran. I mean, Torres is, is, is seeking a third term. Dooley seeking a second term. This school board race as of the end of August, you know how much money has been raised as of the end of August? Thousands and thousands of dollars. Not like the Allison Spillman, Meg Bryce campaign that's all, what, a combined collective of north of 500 grand, close to three quarters of a million dollars amongst those two candidates? I guess here's the question I, I ask for you, okay? John Blair, this is a great question for you. Viewers and listeners, this is a great question for you. Why did Meg Bryce and Allison Spillman, that school board race? Why did it captivate the region, captivate the Commonwealth, and captivate the country? You had a, two political newcomers and Bryce and Spillman, yet that race was, had a national audience and had nearly, you know, not nearly, but flirting with a million dollars in combined campaign financing raised. This school board race has on paper a more significantly known commodity. Zayanna Bryant, who was the driving force with removing the Robert E. Lee statue from Lee Park. Zayanna Bryant, who has led Black Lives Matter, Black Women's Matter, marches and movements all over the city, actively has spoken before city council on dozens of occasions, has a notorious reputation at the University of Virginia with, with, with disgracing, uh, a fellow student, has a national profile in, in, in advertising campaigns like Dove Soap, for example, where she was at one time a, a pitch woman and spokesperson for Dove. Yet no one is talking about this race. Why the difference, viewers and listeners? Why the difference, Judah Wickhauer?
Well, first of all, you've got the name recognition of, uh, of Meg Bryce's father. Uh, you've also got the fact that she was a Moms of Liberty supporter, uh, which a lot of, uh, a lot of local, uh, local Democrats took issue with. And I think between that and the accusations that she was going to come on the board and start banning books and, uh, and other things that, uh, I don't know, that, uh, Democrats don't want done, um, built up a strong, a strong, um, anti-support, uh, support for the, for, uh, for Spillman, um, in the campaign. And, and, and it got the attention of, uh, of what's her name? Sophia? Uh, who's the, the major mover, mover and shaker?
Sonia Smith.
Sonia Smith, yeah. And, uh, and from there it, uh, grew and grew and grew.
Bill McChesney, welcome to the broadcast. William McChesney says Lisa Torres has served this community extremely well. Extremely well from William McChesney. Why, viewers and listeners? I mean, I, I don't have the answer for you. I find it as, uh, someone who studies and watches human behavior, call it a social voyeur. Social voyeur. Meg Bryce and Allison Spillman, two white women that had never served office. They ran a race within the last 20 months, 18 months. Allison Spillman's finishing her second year, not even done with her second year. So this race happened two years ago. Not even two years ago, ladies and gentlemen. And it captivated the country. It captivated the Commonwealth. It captivated Charlottesville. It captivated Charlottesville, Virginia, central Virginia. Zayanna Bryant has a much more significant personal profile. Some would call notorious profile. Others would call impactful profile. Tomato, tomato, glasses half full, glasses half empty. And no one is talking about it.
It's because there's no real competition in terms of, uh, in terms of ideologies.
You're saying because the four candidates in Charlottesville are all Democrats?
Yeah.
But there are extremely varying degrees of Democrats.
Yeah.
Emily Dooley is a Democrat, but a center-ile Democrat. Torres is a Democrat, but a centered aisle Democrat. Zayanna Bryant and, and Deshaun Cooper, much less center-ile. Bryant, far-left Democrat. And then I asked the question to you, the viewer and listener, does it matter to you as a voter that neither Bryant nor Cooper have kids? They're not parents, nor do they have children in Charlottesville public schools? Does that matter to you? Does it matter to you that on paper, a crystal ball would suggest that this is a stepping stone position for politically ambitious Zayanna Bryant, where Torres and Dooley are pursuing terms three and two? Cooper has run for council already and failed. He's politically ambitious. He's C-suite within the Democratic Party of Charlottesville. He seems to be on paper ambitious. The candidates could not be more different. Yes, they're Ds, but school board races are supposed to be nonpartisan. It's just, it's fascinating to me as a human voyeur, as a social voyeur. Georgia Gilmer, if I had to guess, it was because of who Meg Bryce's father was. Derek Bond, who had a conservative running, uh, or close to a conservative running in the school board, nothing but liberals running, they win either way in school board. That's from Derek Bond.
Yeah.
Derek, does it matter to you, your father, your father, fantastic father, wonderful, you have a wonderful daughter? Does it matter to you that two of the four candidates, I respect Derek Bond tremendously, does it matter to you that two of the four candidates do not have children, they're not parents, and they don't have kids in city schools and they're trying to run for school board?
But even if it does matter, you still have to, still have to vote for one of them. If you've got two parents and two non-parents and three seats, you're getting one person at least who is not a parent.
That's fair. Does it matter to you? You're a single man. No kids. Does it matter to you? Or do you feel that that's like a version of like, I don't, what's the word? It's not sexism. It's not racism. It's not classism where you're, it's not ageism.
Parentism.
Some kind of ism. Parentism? Is that a version of parentism?
I think for me, it would be, uh, I would be more interested in their qualifications than whether or not they were a parent. It would certainly, I think, uh...
What qualifications can you have? And I'm spitballing with you, and maybe I'm being a hater. Maybe I'm being a hater right now. What qualifications can you have as a 23 or 24-year-old that's running for school board?
It's a good question.
That's never been a parent, that has no kids, that is fresh out of college?
I mean, it could be work experience. It could be, uh, board experience somewhere else.
Does being a, a, a product of city schools quantify as legitimate experience? Can you wave the flag, "I am a graduate of city schools" and utilize that as a flag for why you should be voted? A platform point?
I think it's certainly possible.
And you think it's a viable one?
I don't think it's the, I don't think it's the best, uh, the best show of, of ability or, uh, or fitness for the role, but, uh, you know, somebody coming from the schools saying, you know, I've, I've seen what, uh, what happens in schools. I've been involved in, uh, as a student, trying to, uh, to make the schools better. And, uh, I think I could bring a level of understanding and, uh, desire to change the system, um, that, uh, that I personally saw, um, had issues.
We'll give props to Conan Owen, Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. He does a lot of the signage for candidates locally, a lot of the, the, uh, campaign marketing collateral. Sir Speedy of Central Virginia is locally owned and operated by a gentleman named Conan Owen, who is a Darton School graduate. Anything graphics related, signage related, direct mail related, stickers related, decals related, you have a logo, you need some kind of application for it, hard marketing collateral for it. Sir Speedy of Central Virginia, Conan Owen is who you called. They did the banner behind me. They've updated our storefront, studio, branding and graphics. They've helped us with some positions outside of our building, the Mackler Building on Market Street. Sir Speedy of Central Virginia. Derek Bond says this, his photo on screen. My kids go to private school. No way I would let them go to public school with these candidates running. Derek Bond also says, "Of course it would make a difference if they were parents and had kids in city schools, but it's a losing cause in Charlottesville. Liberals run things and kids are not the focus with politics and liberals' causes are the focus of these school board races." Derek Bond, appreciate the commentary.
Yeah, I can see that.
John Blair, his photo on screen, number two in the family. Jerry, one reason is that in 2023, there was not a statewide election in November. No governor or senator election. So the local races were going to get a lot more attention. In 2025, we have a governor's election as well as a lieutenant governor and attorney general. They are taking up all the oxygen. John Blair also says, "The other reason that this Bryce Spillman election was bigger, bigger deal is that it was a classic R versus D contest, Republican versus Democrat."
Yeah.
Seaville is just for Democrats. Nobody cares about what it is essentially. A primary to see who can be the furthest to the left. John Blair's right. Derek Bond's right.
Yeah.
A lot of people are right. And I'm a, I'm a, I'm a caution voters in Charlottesville. I'm going to caution voters. You are already seeing Charlottesville public, public schools embody this phrase, "The gentrification of education." As you continue to elect officials that are far from center, whether left or right, in this case, far left, and as you continue to push policy that is far from common sense, you will continue to see the gentrification of education in Charlottesville public schools. The cost of living in Charlottesville is expensive. Owning a house in Charlottesville is expensive. Buying a house in Charlottesville is expensive. You are seeing baby boomers that have no kids buy up a lot of the housing stock in Charlottesville and in Alamo County. And when it's not the baby boomers that are buying the housing stock in Charlottesville and Alamo County, you're seeing wealthy families buying the housing stock in Charlottesville and Alamo County. Neither the baby boomers who have no kids, nor the wealthy families that are buying housing in Charlottesville and Alamo County are positive scenarios for public schools in Alamo and the city of Charlottesville. Baby boomers infiltrating, maybe that's negative connotations. Baby boomers matriculating to Charlottesville and Alamo County means less kids in public schools. Wealthy families in Charlottesville and Alamo County means less kids in public schools. Electing officials that are far from center in their ideology and watching as elected officials who are far from center with their ideology push policy that is far from common sense yields or leads to the gentrification of education. And if we're not careful, we will see public schools in Charlottesville and Alamo County become afterthoughts or, or, or far from versions of their former selves when at one time Charlottesville and Alamo County public schools had some of the best school systems in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And that's what's happening right before our very eyes. And the only folks that are talking about that transformation, that evolution, maybe you use the words like destruction, are this program right here. There's a forum tonight where you get to know these four candidates. Their photos on screen. Zayanna Bryant, a first-time candidate. Emily Dooley, seeking a second term. She's an incumbent. Lisa Torres, an incumbent, seeking a third term. And Deshaun Cooper, a candidate who previously ran for other offices, including city council, but did not have success with it. I think he's also run, Deshaun Cooper, for school board in the past. This is maybe third times the charm for this man. Uh, next headline. Judah Wickhauer, what do you got?
Next up, we have the school receiving a grant.
Um, you dot the i's and cross the t's on this one, and then we'll go to what the research park looks like with a rendering from the UVA Today media platform. Show is yours on that. Who, what, when, where, why?
This is a, uh, $235,000 grant going to the Charlottesville City Schools. This is for a community school model. It's collaborative leadership and support model that works to transform the division school, schools into neighborhood hubs designed to strengthen, uh, four elements, which are collaborative leadership, family and community engagement, student engagement and motivation, and student mental health and basic needs. Um, I've certainly, uh, seen at least secondhand the need for student engagement as well as, uh, as parent engagement. Uh, at our church, we used to have, uh, we used to have tutoring for kids in the Riverside neighborhood. And part of the problem, um, from what I've heard, was that the parents weren't very involved, meaning that the students were not very motivated to come in. And when they did come in, they weren't very involved. And so eventually the program petered out and, uh, obviously that's no help to students that need help. And so I'm hoping that family and community engagement as well as student engagement, uh, pushes, uh, through this, through this money, this, this grant, uh, will help in those areas and, uh, potentially get kids more, uh, more interested in, you know, in their schoolwork, in the classroom, in learning. And, uh, what would be wonderful is getting some of those numbers that we know are, are pretty bad up from where they are right now.
Judah Wickhauer, on point. Judah Wickhauer, jack of all wits. Well said, Judah Wickhauer. Next headline. Put it on screen, my friend.
Let's see. Look at UVA's North Fork Research Park.
Put the photo on screen, if you could.
Just a second.
Wait till you see this, ladies and gentlemen.
There it is.
Look at, this is a town. This looks like Georgetown or McLean or Clarendon. Old Alexandria. Downtown Old Alexandria right here. North Fork Research Park. You have Alamo County investing tens of millions of dollars. You have Rivanna Station, a home to the military contracting firms and all the alphabets that are government clearance that drive 1.3 billion in economic value for our local economy. Now you have AstraZeneca and four and a half billion dollars. You have 406, two acres of land purchased by Alamo County, located on Boulder's Road off Route 29 in northern Alamo. You still got that photo, photo on screen, Judah?
I'll put it back.
Put, I, ladies and gentlemen, this is, this is, this is just a rendering. This is a town that they are building here of highly paid government clearance, scientists and engineers. I was having a, a, a back and forth with a, a prize viewer and listener about what AstraZeneca is, is, is bringing to market. The initial discussion, I think this viewer and listener was watching, it was in, watching now, it was in the comment section of, 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 of my Facebook page yesterday. And this viewer and listener, who I have a lot, a lot of respect for, indicated that... I have a lot, a lot of respect for, indicated that it was scientist type, it was factory jobs that AstraZeneca was bringing to market. And I said, au contraire, monsieur. I sent a press release from AstraZeneca on what's coming to market with this $4.5 billion investment. And I'm just gonna read it from the AstraZeneca website, okay, J-Dubs?
Yeah.
Why don't I just read it from the AstraZeneca website here? The $4.5 billion manufacturing facility in Almaro County is expected to create 600 highly skilled jobs in Virginia, including engineers, scientists, process facilitators. Additionally, 3,000 jobs will be created to support the construction of the facility, including engineers, skilled trades and construction workers. This project will position Almaro County at the forefront of technology innovation, leveraging AI, automation and data analytics to optimize production. These are not factory jobs that are coming. Almaro County agreed in May of 2023 to proceed with a $58 million purchase of more than 462 acres of land called Rivanna Station and Rivanna Futures. $58 million of taxpayer resources in May of 2023. Now, in October of 2025, those 462 acres will not only be home to the second most significant driver of the region's economy, government contracting, which we knew a few years ago had an economic impact of 1.3 billion dollars, Chamber of Commerce study. But it will, in 2029, be anchored by a 4.5 billion with a B investment by publicly traded AstraZeneca. And this rendering, put it on screen, is just a snapshot of one roadway.
Yeah.
This is one roadway. I cannot wait to see the drone footage of this town or small city that's being built in Northern Almaro County. And it's a perfect segue into the next topic. Louisa County or Orange County? I just got a press release from Neil Williamson. Oh, Neil Williamson's watching the program. God, you're a gentleman and a scholar, Neil Williamson. Love you significantly. It's a perfect segue into what I'm talking about right now. Green County or Louisa County, if you had to compare and contrast the two jurisdictions for the sake of a talk show, which jurisdiction are you more bullish on? Louisa County has got, Judah, so much to be excited about. It's got its proximity to Interstate 64. Louisa County has its proximity to Eli Lilly, which is spending $5 billion to create 650 jobs in Goochlin County. Louisa County has Walmart, a distribution center, Walmart, a hub for retail. Louisa County has Lowe's, a significant outpost for hardware supplies and retail items. Louisa County has the Spring Creek neighborhood, where some folks are saying there's 500 to 600 lots still to be developed. Louisa County has a board of supervisor members, including two that are watching the program right now, that are very pro-business and eager to attract incremental business revenue to this well-positioned county next to one of the most important corridors in the mid-Atlantic, Interstate 64. Green County has many reasons to also be bullish. Stanley Martin is driving a charge of 1,000 to 2,000 incremental housing units, depending on who you ask, somewhere between a G and two Gs of new housing stock coming to market. Green County's sharing the border of 462 acres, Rivanna Futures and Rivanna Station, and the $58 million investment from Almaro County. Green County shares the border with AstraZeneca, 600 jobs, four and a half billion. Green County shares the border of North Fork, of this research park, North Fork, UVA. So which of the two counties are you, the viewer and listener, more bullish on? Neil Williamson sends me a press release, to you as well. He's the president of the Free Enterprise Forum, all-around A-plus guy, fantastic golfer. I hear he's very good friends with Captain America, and he's gonna ask his buddy Captain America to show up on the I Love Seville Network around Halloween. I can't wait for Neil to ask his buddy Captain America to show up. I hear Captain America's gonna be hanging out with Batman and Robin and a superhero appraiser. And, and, and Alfred's gonna show up as well behind the camera.
We'll see Alfred.
This press release, Green County earns its first double A bond rating. Green County recently received its first ever bond ratings from two major Wall Street bond rating agencies, Moody's Ratings and Standard &amp; Poor's. Moody's assigned Green County with a, a double A rating, and S&amp;P assigned a double A rating. Actually, Moody's signed it as an AA2 rating, and S&amp;P signed a double A rating. These are the second highest ratings possible for each of the agencies. Green County sought a bond rating in anticipation of the sale of $43,500,000 principal amount of water and sewer revenue bonds approved by the Board of Supervisors at its September 9th, 2025 meeting. In addition to assigning the county underlying, county's underlying ratings, Moody's and S&amp;P have assigned the 2025 Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds AA3 and double A ratings respectively. The high ratings were the result of the county's strong financial position and recognition of the county's financial stability and prudent management. That leaves me asking the question. Green County or Louisa County? Louisa County or Green County? Which county has the more upside? I'll try to answer the question a couple of different ways. First off, it is extremely obvious to anyone that follows this, that Green County and Louisa County are riding the coattails or the momentum of Almaro County. Almaro County has become so coveted to live within that its affordability index is at its all-time worst. More difficult than ever right now to live in Almaro County and wait until rates drop a point, if not more, early next year, and the affordability becomes even more challenging in Almaro County. As Almaro County is a barrier to enter, and in this case, the barrier to enter is owning a home, cost of living, the challenges of obtaining quality of life in Almaro. The folks that are priced out of Almaro are doing this, Judah. Looking east and looking north. How do you look north? I think I can know, I, I can look east. How do I look east? I'm terrible with directions. Is it east this way? Where's my compass? Damn. I couldn't even turn on a light bulb today. East is this way, right? East is like this way.
Your phone's got a compass.
Which way? How do I look north? Jesus. Somebody help me. Is my compass on my phone? What would I do without this phone? I think I deleted the compass. Oh, I have the compass. Here's my compass. All right, so north.
Let's see.
North is this way. All right, I'm looking north.
North is that way.
This is what people that are priced out of Almaro County are doing. They're looking this way to green. How do you look east to, to Louisa?
That way.
Okay, they're looking this way. Louisa, I'm looking at you over here. Louisa, what's up? What's up, Fitzgerald Barnes? Love you, Fitz. You're the man, Fitzgerald Barnes. Looking north. I better start getting tight with the Green County supervisors. What's up, Green County supervisors? What's up, Neil Williamson? I see you playing Green Hills. You're shooting under par over there, Neil Williamson. Keep it in the short grass, Neil. Who are you more bullish on? Green County or Louisa County? Can't wait to hear Judah Wickhauer's take on this. What's your take? Come on, make a take, make a take.
I don't know enough.
People watch and listen to hear your takes, Judah Wickhauer.
Yeah, sure they do.
What's your take?
I honestly do not have a take on this.
You gotta have a take. John Blair, what's your take? Neil Williamson, I know what Neil Williamson is gonna say. He lives in Green County. Gosh, we should get Fitzgerald Barnes. This is what we should do. We should do a roundtable where it's Fitzgerald Barnes and a Green County supervisor on the I Love Seville Show, talking about the upside of their respective counties. Fitz counseled me and, and starting, uh, my business nearly 20 years ago while he was athletic director at Monticello High School. Literally was one of the guiding sounding boards for me, Fitzgerald Barnes. I hope he hears that. He knows that. Love Fitzgerald Barnes. Um, comments are coming in quickly. Bob Yarborough, king of redfields, his photo on screen. Love Bob Yarborough, voice of reason. Bob Yarborough says this. I try to refrain from hyperbole, but this research park is landscape altering, for real. I'm old enough to remember Raleigh Durham Chapel Hill before the Triangle Research Park took off. Not predicting the same level of impact, but this is certainly significant. That's from Bobby Yarborough. The head of AstraZeneca and the men and women signing the donation and fundraising checks to drive this biotechnology are literally saying that this significance will be more impactful than Raleigh Durham Chapel Hill and will have more notoriety than the biotechnology footprint in Boston, Massachusetts. And are directly comparing, the head of the Paul Manick Biotech Institute says, "We will build the Silicon Valley of the East Coast, but instead of technology, it's gonna be biotechnology." The governor in Charlottesville on Friday said, "We will have a biotechnology Beltway from Rockingham to Richmond with Almaro County carrying and waving the flag that will be of worldwide credibility and notoriety." Yonkin's James Watson, watching the program, his photo on screen. "This will be bigger than the Crozay boom. Your figure, you figure Crozay boom without any significant major employers coming to the area just off of growth of the university and the hospital. This other area is growing based off of a massive job creation, and as northern Virginia suburbs are beginning to spread west and south, it's not that unthinkable that a spouse could work one day, a week or so, anywhere from Warrenton to Chantilly while living in green." That's from James Watson. We have print, radio and television watching the program. We have supervisors from Green County, Louisa County, Orange County, Almaro County, and counselors from the city of Charlottesville watching right now. Janice Boyce Trevillian's photo on screen. She says, "Jerry, Louisa County, Louisa County schools are better. That's gotta be worth something." Georgia Gilmer says, "That photo is similar to Fontaine Research Park, but it's got a much better layout." Neil Williamson shares a link. That link is to this URL, discovernorthfork.com. Good God, I haven't seen this before, Neil Williamson. If you were here, I'd give you a flying chest bump. God, I love you, Neil. Keep it in the short grass. You're shooting a 67 today, and then you're gonna all earn that ice cold beer in the clubhouse, Neil Williamson. Discovernorthfork.com. Judah, can you write that down? Discovernorthfork.com. I hadn't seen this before, Neil Williamson. You've made the program better. The president of the Free Enterprise Forum. Support the Free Enterprise Forum. Neil Williamson's a great guy. This video that's on Discover, uh, northfork.com, can you queue that up on the laptop, not on the, the network Mac?
Yeah.
Discovernorthfork.com. Are you on there?
Just about.
Can we clip this video from Discovernorthfork.com and play it on the show tomorrow?
Uh, let me check.
This is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. Let's look at our amenities. I'm going to the our amenities page. Uh, state of the art fitness center. It's gonna have a state of the art fitness center. Dining and catering services, foods of all nations north, grocery store, a cafe, meeting and event space, an autonomous circular shuttle, has outdoors, three miles of paved and wooded hiking trails. Jesus Christ, this is a city all set on 500 acres of land. Can you get that video for tomorrow's show? I'm not asking you to do that right now. That's the unthinkable. You can get that? Tenants and neighbors can enjoy over 20,000 square feet of amenity space at North Fork. Sip a latte from Navbar, feel the burn on a hit class, stroll along three miles of recreational trails, go to a state of the art facility, go to a grocery store, an autonomous shuttle, all while getting baby oil massages from Judah Wickhauer.
Hey now.
I just made, I didn't clue to that part. That's not, that's not on Discovernorthfork.com.
You weren't supposed to tell people I gave those.
That's not on Discover. The only thing that's not on Discover North Fork is the massages from Judah Wickhauer. And who would want the massages from Judah Wickhauer? I should say instead what like, uh, who, who would be a better description of somebody I should say?
To give, uh, baby oil massages?
You're overthinking it. Who should be the one giving the baby oil massages?
You?
What? Not me?
If you're, if you're offering.
Wait, 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 why would anybody want that from me? Scarlett Johansson, Jessica Biel, Mila Kunis? Come on. Eva Mendes, Megan Fox, Jessica Alba? That's just off the top of my head. Can you get that video for tomorrow's show?
Yeah.
You can?
Yeah, I just downloaded it.
Unbelievable. We're gonna play that tomorrow. That's gonna be the lead. Neil Williamson, you made the program better. He's on his way to a 65 today at Green Hills. Bill McChesney says, "Ask Judah to show the two images I just sent him on DM." We, it doesn't, I, I love that you're sending us the two images, Bill McChesney, but it does not, uh, it does not work that way. Uh, we are doing a line talk show. As many, as much as we can do a bunch of stuff at the same time, it is also, if people understood what two people were doing right now and we, how we have, can you go to the studio camera? Is it one, two, three, four, five, six? We have seven cameras, three big screen TVs, three Apple TVs, a Mac laptop, a Mac desktop, another laptop, communicating through Facebook Messenger, three different softwares integrated together to create a proprietary streaming system that we've pretty much cobbled together through popsicle sticks and Band-Aids, fiber ISP that costs us 8K to put into the building, a gig up, a gig down, minimum. And we don't ask you for any money. Most people doing this would be asking you for some kind of Patreon. Eventually, we should, we should probably do that. We will highlight Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes. Custom Hardscape of any capacity, Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes is who you call. Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes, ladies and gentlemen. They will help anyone in Almaro, Charlottesville or Central Virginia bring a custom hardscape at your house to life. They are the best in the business. Oak Valley Custom Hardscapes, ladies and gentlemen. James says this, "This may sound crazy, but if UVA basketball and football continue to do well, plus the Olympic sports and all the new facilities and conference centers that are being built, this whole Central Virginia region is gonna change big time." That's not crazy at all, James. James Watson is Nostradamus and a visionary. We, the period we're living in right now, when did he find, when did he start the University of Virginia? University of Virginia? I just need a Wikipedia answer. The period, this is, this is not hyperbole, okay? The University of Virginia was founded in 1819 by Thomas Jefferson and contains its Academical Village, a UNESCO World Heritage Site. We are right now in the year soon to be 2026, at a time when Thomas Jefferson in 1816, 1817, was talking about founding the University of Virginia in 1819. Where you, the viewer and listener, are right now in Charlottesville and Almaro County is where Thomas Jefferson was in 1816 at a tavern somewhere next to, probably at Mickey Tavern, slugging a warm beer out of a massive pint with, 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 with James Madison and Johnny Adams, bellied up to a bar, and Tommy's like, you know what, you know what, Johnny? You know what, Quincy? I'm thinking about starting a university. And I think I'm gonna call it the University of Virginia. Can I get another round here from my boys, the Adams? That's where we're at right now. That's how significant this time- at right now. That's how significant this time is. And some people see it, some people will wait to see it, some people know how to capitalize on it. There's entrepreneurs and opportunists that already capitalized on this a generation ago. There's people like me that have been trying to capitalize and opportunist this for the last 36 months to 48 months, three to four years. And then there's some people that are just gonna wake up and be like, "Oh, my God, there's a research park here. There's billions of dollars here. I guess I should have invested into real estate, or bought some rental properties, or bought some office space. Wow, that $11 million acquisition is worth $22 million now. Goodness gracious." That's not hyperbole. That is not hyperbole, ladies and gentlemen. Rebecca Mopin Simmons says, "It looks absolutely amazing," and she loves I Love Seville. We'd love that you watch the program. All right, I gotta go make some money and capitalize on this opportunity. We've got some meetings this afternoon where we're gonna do just that. I need to close with an update on Lee Vogler, which you're gonna provide for the viewers and listeners with the lower third on screen.
Lee Vogler, as many of you know, was sadly doused in gasoline and set on fire. The good news is that he is now walking independently. His wife has given an update to his progress, saying that he's moved out of ICU this past Tuesday, months ahead of what was originally projected. And he is in good spirits and doing well in regaining strength, as well as healing, of course, from his burns.
Prayers, thoughts, and nothing but love to Lee Vogler, who's come on the I Love Seville Show multiple times.
Yep. Amen.
Final headline is this. "This weekend is monumental for the Atlantic Coast Conference, ladies and gentlemen. Virginia comes out of the bye week where it's the number 18 team in the nation. Tony Elliott's team is number 18 in the country, plays Washington State, UVA and Tony Elliott. UVA, ladies and gentlemen, is a 17.5-point favorite at home against Washington State. But that's not the storyline to follow. And yes, I'm a Wahoo fan. The storylines to follow are the following. Georgia Tech, the number 12 team in the nation, undefeated overall, undefeated in ACC play, will travel to Duke, where they'll face a Blue Devil football team that's undefeated in ACC play. Duke is a 2.5-point favorite Saturday, high noon, 12 o'clock kickoff, ESPN. Either Georgia Tech or Duke are gonna finish with a loss in the conference play, which slides UVA even higher as they face a non-conference opponent. Another storyline you should follow, Louisville at Miami on Friday night on national television. The Hurricanes are 13.5-point favorites. Louisville's a really good football team. Let's see what happens in that dogfight. Miami, one of the best teams in the nation. And the last storyline you should follow is SMU, the Ponies, the Mustangs, they're undefeated in conference play. Undefeated in conference play. They travel to a desperate Clemson team. The Tigers, an 8.5-point favorite at home in Death Valley. So you will have either Georgia Tech or Duke, who are undefeated in conference play, with a loss. It looks like SMU, who's undefeated in conference play, will lose to Clemson, or at least Vegas is predicting that. And Louisville and Miami, anything could happen as the Cardinals are a very good football program. Yes, that game is in Coral Gables in South Florida. Lot of storylines this Friday and Saturday in the Atlantic Coast Conference, as Tony Elliott goes from outhouse to penthouse. From three years of having the worst record of all of power football, Tony Elliott, to this year, being on the shortlist for ACC Coach of the Year, your frontrunner right now. And if he runs out the rest of the games, Tony Elliott may be the National Coach of the Year. He can get bowl-eligible this Saturday against Washington State, and has a very good shot of being favored in every football game remaining on his schedule, with a clear path to the ACC Championship and a potential berth in the college football playoff. And just like that, outhouse to penthouse, and on the shortlist for other coaching jobs nationally. That's the I Love Seville Show on a Tuesday. My name is Jerry Allen.